Trying to pay people to do social science research. Now, I think you guys, because you're a small community and because of the neighborhood, you can probably get away with not paying people.
Why don't we go around the table and introduce ourselves?
Okay, alright.
Okay, I'm Marilyn Isentrow.
Diane.
Hi, Diane Shrimp.
Okay.
Tony Benedetti.
Okay.
Tiffany Hughes.
Beth Bellamy.
Okay.
You know.
Yes.
Proceed, so sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
So Eric brought me these two things, and because I just love to fuss with them, okay, I went through and made some suggestions. And he asked me if I'd come to the meeting. And I thought, for him, because he'll come up with his ideas, and I'll say, oh, no, 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 better way to do it, okay. But for the most part, I told Eric, I said, I'm willing to come, I'm willing to take a look at the final copy, okay, of the questionnaire. And then if it gets too annoying, I'll start charging you, at which point, I'll go away.
Probably.
Yeah. So based on, Dr. Roden was kind enough to go through initial surveys. The first one that I did, that you all saw, was based on Saperstein's stuff. And he's done a number. In fact, I just took one. I was telling Pat here that I took one for New Ulman. They called me the other day, and he does those for a lot of different communities. So, since that was a freebie, I took it online, I made it, and you guys saw that one. Then, of course, some of you had comments that returned, Diane and Jen. And I took those and sent everything to Pat, sat down with her, and she went through them, made comments about survey design and all these other items that are important. Her 50 years trumps my five years, by far, so she is the expert in that area. So, and when we get into technical details about why this is placed here, why it's there, if you have any questions, she's the one that can answer those, you know, independently. In general, she liked, of course, Diane's survey, on the whole, better than Saperstein's. So I used that as the base, eliminated a number of questions, combined some other questions we had into the questionnaire as a whole. And again, based on her comments, something's changed. So what you have in there is the second draft combining them. There's, of course, from our purposes, you know, from the community as a whole, the purpose here is to ask questions of her about why certain things are changed, or anything like that, if they have a concern. And then also to talk about anything, you know, with any of these questions. There are a few points where I made comments on it specifically about we needed to discuss a couple of things, just to get your feedback and whatnot, it's mine. So with that said, and I know this is the first time you've seen it, I had a busy morning and stuff, so I got this wrapped up a little later than expected, and emailed it out. So I realized, take a few minutes, feel free to read through it, and then we can kind of be happy to kind of go through things one by one there, or in sections. You'll find that, in general, it's organized. We started to put the organization together in sections. The first part kind of leads off, as a lot of community surveys do, with questions of how do you feel about where you live? Those are the first few questions, some open-ended. And then incorporated Diane's questions on, you know, moving. Do you want to move? That kind of thing. And then we start going through special interest groups. We ask the questions on infrastructure, services, kind of are in there. Pool, there's a number of questions in the pool, and these are, again, I included hers, mine, Jen's comments, those are in there. Kind of try to make them as coherent as possible as you go through them. We kind of talk about, you know, the suggestions in that regard. Because I realize the pool is, people are talking about the pool and fees, and I wanted to have a few in there to try to cover that, but those can be, again, can be talked about. Health of the village, again, overall communications. So there's several questions, starting with 20, 23, that deals with that. Always good to have a question on problems and what people need more of, and those are in there. Have a number of questions in the pool, so we can talk about some of those. Those are combined grouping between the surveys. And then finally, at the very end, is the demographic questions, which are very important, and then Pat can talk about the importance of those, and why those are included, and why it's important to put those at the end, versus the beginning. So, but everything's in there. So, at this point, once you're ready, we can talk specifics.
Okay. Well, I, um, so is one of the goals to make it shorter?
The goal is to keep it to about 20 minutes in a whole for our questionnaire. This is just about there, maybe a little over, depending on how people, how fast people or how many questions people answer. I took about a 20-minute survey that was this long in length just the other day, so it was a good practice run.
Okay.
Roughly speaking.
I think I could complete this in 20 minutes, ideally.
Yeah. It should be right about that time.
Particularly if you're taking it online, okay? We're just going. It really, the thing is, I wouldn't go for more than 15 or 20 minutes, okay? Because then you're in trouble. People will get tired. Right.
That's a good way.
Yeah.
Okay, and so on the specific questions on the first page, I just had a question on using the term "all things considered." I don't know what that, that means, "all things considered." Because it sounds like a, it sounds negative, it's like, considering we don't live in Upper Arlington or Bexley, what do you think?
This is, please.
I mean, that's what it sounds like.
Just so you understand, this is the question that Powell and New Ulman all started that way.
Well, I'm not that way.
Just so you know. The same thing, I'm just keeping it consistent.
I still wouldn't like it.
I understand.
I agree. It's a raised question.
It sounds, right, it sounds negative, I agree with you. Considering the fact that, you know, you don't live there.
If you could say, in general, as a place to live, how would you rate?
I like that better.
Or overall?
Overall, yeah.
Oh, that's, that's good.
Okay.
Switch to this. Very good. All right.
And I would take disappointing in general out. I'd just leave it disappointing.
Yeah, in gen, yeah, I agree.
Okay.
So would we make it overall or in general? What have we decided?
I think overall.
Oh, yeah, I like overall.
Okay.
Okay. All right, and I'll change the "all things considered," the next couple of questions, there are two. Then the moving question, Diane put in her survey, I include the next couple ones there, added some comments on the describe and other that Pat here had suggested.
And I'm a big one on, okay, putting open-ended at the end of it, because no matter what you think of, somebody's going to be really awed, okay? And what we normally do when we have a new question is we go through all the other specified, then it sometimes changes your categories if you're going to repeat this, repeat this again.
From a longitudinal standpoint.
The one thing we didn't talk about in the first page, I think, was the first thank you in advance, how many adult residents in the household plan to please survey?
So, yeah, thanks. I'll jump back to some administrative stuff, but we can do that one right now.
Oh, okay.
So on this one, I, yeah, I left that as a note to myself. So one thing to keep in mind is that, yes, you're going to have, sometimes have several adults per household. Now, one item we get into is with control of the survey, right? So we have to look at, especially from a survey monkey's standpoint, because we're not using, you know, unless we use an interviewer.
Okay.
The issue is, how can a resident go and answer the survey 10 times? Well, that screws things up, right? It screws it from a response standpoint. So we have to do, we have to issue them a unique address, you know, or a unique code, which is a different ballgame. We have to limit. So one per address, per household, per IP address, however it gets to. So as a whole, you catch the whole household. So that way, you don't skew your results. Would you agree that you want to control for?
Well, the thing is, I agree that you want to control, but I disagree that this will do it.
Tell me.
But what you can do, okay, the thing is, usually in most households, you've got two adults, okay? Now, maybe you still have a lot of young people living at home in this area because of bigger, bigger houses. Usually, your problem is not how many people to us per household.
So you're paying to do it, right?
But if you get anybody to do it per household. But the thing is, you're right, you can look at the IP address, okay?
They'll only limit it to one. If I get 10 from the same IP or the same MAC address, then I get a different issue.
Right.
So we can control for, and then our decision is, do we, from a post-processing standpoint, just take the first one entered as the one for the household?
Right.
And skip the next nine?
Yeah.
If someone does it. So there's just a couple, there's a couple admin questions we have to answer from a post-process.
Well, I don't know, it's, I understand it's an admin question, but it's also, again, this is just comes from work-related surveys, all right? And as soon as you start talking about, I mean, the first part, first thing people say is, it's not a, you know, it's, they're not going to know. In some cases.
Well, most people, the first, well, at the workplace, the first thing they ask is, are you tracking an IP address? Okay? That's the first question out of their mouth. Now, maybe the residents aren't that savvy, and they won't understand that that's what's going on. But if, frankly, if I didn't, I wasn't in this meeting, and our household got one survey, and we had to, you know, decide, well, were we going to flip a coin? My husband and I have different views on things. So who gets to, who gets, whose view gets to be counted, and whose view doesn't?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I guess it goes back to the, the purpose, or the, what are you going to do with the results? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Do we have a way of knowing how many adults are in each household? Could we find that out?
Only.
And then we say, okay, you at, for instance, my house, 2575 Minerva Lake Road, you have two adults that live there. So we know through tracking these codes that there should only be two responses maximum.
Well, then you check where they are. I mean, the question is, is do you want this to be anonymous, or don't you?
Well, the thing is, it's not going to be, it's not our intent to necessarily be anonymous. We leave optional at the end, because we need, there needs to be follow-up. In longitudinal surveys, you go back, and you want to follow-up, and you want to make changes to surveys, and then you want to get the same people answering again and again to see how attitudes change over the course of time. You can leave it completely random.
Okay, well, okay, that's, that's in an ideal world, but we're still.
Well, this is how, this is how they're.
I know, but it's.
How they're handled.
Well, yeah, but the thing is, what I would have suggested, if we hadn't got to that point, is I wanted them to put, I wanted Eric to put all the demographics at the back, okay? Any question you think is going to scare people, make them uncomfortable. And the thing is, you make it optional, you know?
You don't have to give it.
Do you want to give us your name, okay? Do you want us to contact you again if we have other questions? And the thing is, some people are going to say yes, and some people are going to say no.
We respect that.
You know? And the thing is, with even, you know, how many people per household, that's too much work to figure that out, okay? So look at the IP addresses, okay? And if you've got somebody that's got 10 people from the same IP address, then you know you've got a problem.
Well, what we can always do, and as we, I think that's a rare case, but nonetheless, we don't want a skewage of results. I think in those cases, if, if one of the surveys, you know, allows us there, because we ask it every time, it's the same thing with your questions, where you'll see where we said, hey, do you want the chair to get in contact with the chair for services, the chair for safety, the chair for community? And if they answer yes, send my contact information, then they're going to answer those questions at the end, and they want to be reconnected. If they say no, then it's no, right? But in those cases where we have people that say yes, let's go ahead and give you your info. And if we see 10 coming from the same house, then we can say, okay, how many, how many people do you have in your household at this point? You know, who are, who are registered? I mean, they're not, not everyone's going to be registered to vote, so that's another way to check, to get back to your question. But not everyone's going to be registered, 18 or over. Then we can say, okay, who's 18 or over that could legitimately answer the survey? And then which of these surveys, you know, I'm going to take the first three, or do you have specific ones? Here's the ones you guys sent me. So in those rare cases, we can go back to the households, we've got someone spamming the community survey, and say, guys, you know, which ones am I taking here?
I can't imagine.
It's a small community.
I can't imagine most people are going.
Yeah.
Hey, you got your teenage, you got three teenage hackers, you know, in Minerva Park, and we're going to. But most, most people have other things to do.
So my teenagers would look at it and be like, I have to do what? I don't even do my homework.
Right, exactly.
Their people get on the internet and answer every internet survey they can to try to skew results. They're people who make a.
Yeah, there's people that have nothing better to do.
But it's rare. Okay, it's rare.
We're going to admit it's a rare one, and if we have.
Okay, so anyway, I think you should take this one out, the first one.
Sure.
Just out, because it's.
How many adult residents?
It'll be covered at the end.
This isn't it.
It'll be covered at the end. Okay, so, all right, we shall continue. So we went in with conditions for changing the address moving, blah, blah, blah. Went in, then number six is where we'll start here, is the village script, one more special interest groups, we have those there. Again, most of the changes had to do with adding the other category to grant me an open-ended, so we can see what people put down, if there's any other discussion. And so most of those stay consistent. This has to do with county-wide medical emergency, jump to the next page. We get to pool. So I don't know, for those of you who are obviously dealing with the pool right now, gives a.
I'm not concerned about where the ambulance comes from, as long as it's there.
That's right. With the pool, I put in some suggested questions, there's, you know, my thinking here in a couple of ways is, one, is a pool important? The pool can be viewed a couple of ways. One, it's important to people who use it, okay? And there's obviously a funding question, you know, for those of you who use the pool. There's also a community pride issue with the pool, that people who may not use it may be okay with some funding mechanism to make the pool private, right? So those questions are in there. You won't know unless you ask. I put those in there to kind of catch a couple of different scenarios. So if you have any specific comments on those, read through the grouping, let me know what you think.
It's looking pretty good.
So you said, pretty good. Could you see some improvements?
No, at this point, I'd have to, okay, what I do is, I look at it, then I come back to it tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Over my lunch hour tomorrow, we'll be looking at it.
That's fair.
But, but the thing is, you know, we've signed up for it in the past, okay? Not now. We've signed up for it the past, and we'll sign up for it this year, you know? Other community, you know, we use other nearby pools. I would take out other communities have better pools, okay, just, you know, because we don't want to insult that little pool. But we use other nearby pools, okay? And there might be many reasons why they do that, you know? Maybe, you know, schools, and they want to keep their kids with the school people, not as restricted in the pool, but believe it helps with property values. I think that's legitimate. The pool was not a factor in deciding to move, you know, that's good to know. The pool is on valuable land that could be better used, you know? I mean, I think that's a good statement, but whether or not it's true, you know, but no opinion. Other describe.
I was just, in the 13 and 14, if yes to 12, if yes to 12. And then 15, and then 16 goes if yes to 14, just in terms of order?
Oh, that was a screw-up on, I was reordering these, so if yes to fifth, it should say if yes to 15 to one right above it.
I know, I was wondering.
Yeah, that, I'm sorry about that.
I know, I'm doing the same thing.
That was just a typo. Yeah, just following along. One is open-ended, in the sense that people, even if people don't use the pool, they may want to see the pool used just for Minerva Park residents. There actually may be an opinion, because of community pride standpoint.
That's true.
So that's why that one's open regardless, whether they use the pool or not.
Should number 17 in parentheses be if yes to number 16?
Um, no, because it's, because it's, it'll, it'll follow through. What happens is, it goes on a path.
Okay.
And it'll just, it'll, it'll follow number 16, but it's only if, if people answer yes to 15, or they fall along that pathway, and then jump back into the survey again.
So do you think that 17 is a valuable question?
Absolutely.
I mean, how many people are not going to circle A?
Uh, I don't know who's going to do, we don't know until we ask the question.
Would you?
The reason we ask an amount is, so there's several, there's several opportunities. So what if, what if we have a number of residents, which we don't know until we ask, who favor closing the pool to anyone except for residents? Well, then how do we?
What's with 17?
I know, but this, this is related.
Okay.
Related to 15. If you have to answer yes to 15, and then it takes you down to 16 and 17, you have to answer both of those. So once, once you answer yes to 15, you'll, you'll end up at 17 as well. And the question here has to do with, what would you support to keep it? You know, everyone, everyone's got to be in on that. Because what, there's, there's a couple of different mechanisms, funding-wise, that you can do. People can, there could be a collective vote on, like, a park area, for example, and one of the fees, that's a property tax issue. And so as a Parks District, everybody out of the house pays $100 off the property tax, and it goes right to the Parks Fund, as an example, which is dedicated to the pool. And that's just one example. There could be another way to make it. But we don't, you don't know if people are in favor of anything until you ask the question.
But my point is, is who would say, I want to pay more money?
You would be surprised when we were in dire straits, when we were in dire straits before. There were people who were giving us contributions. They were, and that's how that pool was built in the first place. They went around selling bonds door to door.
You have to, you have to ask the question, no, people may, they voted, you know, overwhelmingly down. I don't know until they do it. They may not want to support the pool at all to make it private, they may want to leave it just the way it is. But you don't know until you ask that question. And it's important that if they want to keep it private, you have to then look at funding, because there's no way to know how much people are willing to pay. It just gives you a guidance, you know, based on response. Never hurts to ask. All right. And then this 18 is just, back to Diane's question, had to do with feedback on the pool to improve. And then this, again, goes back to send my contact info to the community, committee chair, yes or no? And so, again, if that's a yes, then when they get to the end, they'll fill in their contact information, and we'll, we'll send it on. Financial health of the village question, then we get to communication, so we have impressions, style of governing of the village.
I love the financial health.
Oh, you like that one?
In precarious position, needs constant monitoring. What have you been doing? What has this committee been doing?
Don't feel that bad.
That they feel, okay, don't have enough information, that's good.
So are you kidding about me, or what?
Well, I'm just laughing about it, you know?
This is a person who does surveys for a living.
I know. I love your sense of humor, but.
You know?
I do, too.
I love it.
I want to know who's spending the village money, and on what, you know?
So, so on to, then, as we move into 20, then we have, of course, impressions, open, closed, don't know, and don't care. So people who can have either opinion, so.
Yeah.
And then we get into communication questions, hopefully just get the village news and events. The village needs to get word out and provide, which one do they prefer?
Well, okay, so the thing is, this, the 21 is a mark all that apply, okay?
You also need to put village Facebook.
Okay.
On there, too.
Okay. Village Facebook.
Please.
Mark all that apply, you got it. Okay. And the village needs to get the word out about a better provided information, best way to notify it, not a mark all. The next one.
Yeah.
And then we have an open-ended one for what would you do to improve communication? Somebody might have a wonderful ID on that, so.
And somebody might volunteer.
That's right, you never know. Then we have, you know, a couple, a couple planning-related questions, what I think Minerva Park needs more of, and what is the biggest challenge, you know? And we have others described, because we don't know, based on year after year, every two years over the office is done, those can get, those categories can get readjusted based on how people are responding. We have a number of police.
A 25.
Go ahead.
Okay. In your opinion, okay, what is the biggest challenge that Minerva Park has to solve? I would try to make that a little more positive.
Yeah.
And say, you know, what do you think, you know, should be our priorities, okay? Now, you guys may have lucked out inadvertently because of that corridor, the transportation corridor.
Yeah.
Okay? Talk about being in the right place at the right time, okay? Now, I don't know how that group is doing, because when I read the proposal, I just laughed hysterically, because they wanted our organization to apply for it.
Oh, over there, okay.
Wow! Okay? But being on Cleveland and being up, okay? If you can keep this a nice little community, okay, in a city that is getting more and more urbanized, okay? If you can play up the little community aspect of it, okay? With that transportation to downtown, okay, it's gonna, it's gonna be.
C-max.
Yeah, very nice.
All right. The last grouping of questions deals with the police. And there are a number of different, different questions incorporated, both of them, Saperstein's question, as well as some of Diane's comments incorporated there. And that is the last grouping. We never had any comments on that.
Well, I'd like to get some more questions put in, honestly, my gun to the police.
What other questions would you like?
I'd like to know whether the residents are in favor of having our own police department.
Oh, okay.
You know, I want to start off with all things considering, but, you know, costs a million dollars a year, or it's getting ready to be proposed at a million. You know, I'd like to see some questions about how many police officers would you like to see on duty at one time? You know, those are, those are things that have been brought up to me from friends and acquaintances here in the village. There's been people talking about getting rid of our police, you know, that turned our police department over to blend in.
Well, maybe we could add that, like.
I like it going.
In 26, just to say, as a resident of Minerva Park, satisfied, are you, we could add one that said, couldn't we or not? That said, would be happy with.
Township police.
Township police, something like that.
Sheriff's, something like that.
Yeah.
So, okay. Well, and it's one of those things indirectly, I mean, if you want something in there explicit, you know, we can obviously work on sticking something that's explicit. Obviously implicitly, if someone says, you get a majority of people said that are dissatisfied, you get, you know, some majority that's dissatisfied from the answers, because you know something is a miss, so, and, you know, we can, there's a couple ways.
Yeah, but you wouldn't, based on these questions, Tony's right, based on these questions, you wouldn't think it was because people didn't want police, the police here.
All right.
That's a little more, that's a little different twist on it.
Question number 30 is kind of, I, I don't think it's a bad question, I think it's a great question. But it almost, again, going from 1% to 2%, to support the 24/7 police force today, are you mostly satisfied, and da-da-da-da? But it doesn't give you any, like you're saying, would you, are you okay with a part-time, if we could go back to, you know, the olden days when we weren't paying 2%? I mean, I can't tell you how many people are fed up with the 2% tax time, we see it every year, tax time.
I know, I hear it.
And as of right now, I mean, I'm to the point, I'm ready to move, after I just left my account in three hours today.
So, we could, you know, you could take 30 and you could ask for a suggestion, other describe. For example, we could use that on 30?
We can, you know, we can leave the 30 in there. We can add a question, per your suggestion regarding, you know, something that gets along the lines of, would you like to see service police within your community or would you want?
If I could say for 30, that wasn't just to be funding a 24/7 police department, it was other things as well.
Okay.
I mean, if that's how you want to word it and have it hanging just on having a police department, that's fine, but it's a bit skewed.
Okay.
I would agree, but we might get some backlash. And I think maybe if you had a question to teeter with that one or something like that, because I agree. I mean, it's something that it kind of.
You're paying all of it if they're backdoor, which is not fair.
So, in that case, in that case, we can, we can change that one to get to the heart of the question per suggestion.
Right, I think those are all good questions, but I think leading, if we're trying to get the overall opinion of a lot of people in the village, you know? Asking about, and I'm not good at asking the questions, you are good at that. But I think just one general question in there that states, you know? Do you want the, you know, is this, is this the reason you live here? I mean, again, I know you could have.
Is this important to you? Is this important to you, not, not as a threat, because I know a lot of people keep interpreting it that way? But if you want it, you're going to have to pay for it.
Exactly.
We are in a position right now of looking at some candidates and everybody's saying, once again, all the law enforcement agencies, the candidates just aren't really good anymore, because people are reluctant to go into law enforcement. Guess why, you'll get killed.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, you have to, if you want it, you're going to have to spend it. But this is not just about the police department.
No, it's absolutely, and again, I think having all the different ones.
We'll design a question and then.
Yeah, I don't know how.
I think we're saying the same thing, yeah.
We'll, we'll do that, it's no problem.
So, I think, you know, again, I think it's good.
I could just say, instead of saying, in order to fund a 24/7 police force, in part, which was in, used in part.
Right.
To fund a 24/7 police force.
So, I'm assuming you're going to draft something else than Eric?
Yeah, we'll finalize this.
And maybe just figuring the answers to be a little bit different to, again, I don't know, you're much better at that than I am, but.
Because it almost seems to me to be, I don't want to say prejudicial, but it's like we're kind of planting a seed saying, this is where all your money went. It's all to the police.
Yeah. Well, there's that, but then there's, there is people who will say, they would like to see the tax go back to 1%.
Right.
Or to be shared.
Yeah, if it goes back to 1%, then you have funding issues.
So, so, you know, people don't, I wouldn't ask that question, because people, a lot of people would say yes, of course.
Of course, we're going to say yes.
So, I mean, that doesn't work, so, you know.
You're the one you're going to lose.
There's a, you know, so, so was trying to ball up a bunch of things into one question, so. But I understand the concern, so.
We'll get something drafted, okay?
Just try making it even-handed.
Yeah, per se.
And I'm not sure if, I was looking with this. I mean, I was okay with how satisfied are you? Does a good job of keeping my community safe?
It's my instinct.
Oh, okay, well, that's all right, but I'm still, you know.
Saperstein.
Are you getting to the competent one? Because that's the one I got.
I mean, I just, and the other thing I would do is, I would start out and say, have you had to call?
Okay.
That's later, but they'd have that.
Right, have that right out front. Because the thing is, if, if you called them, okay? Then your opinions are going to be colored by that, okay? And then, how would you rate that experience? Perfect, okay? If the village had a focus group, would you participate? And in there, you might some, you know, you might use that right in front of the one about the money, okay? So that, you know, you've said, you know, we're thinking about this and we raised the taxes to do this, but, you know, if we are willing to use other people's. I mean, I don't know enough, I mean, the good news is, I have no idea how many policemen you have, okay? I have no idea how important it is to people in this area to have their own policeman. Now, I do know that my sister lives over near Carl and Sandalwood, okay? So, I have seen.
Forest Park.
Yeah, Forest Park, okay. So, I know more about Forest Park than I really care to, okay? But you are on the edge, okay, of changing neighborhoods, okay? And it's partly because, but in the meantime, I'm telling you, there are people coming in from out of town, okay? Because people on the east coast and the west coast, which is why the housing market has gone exploded, okay? And your only problem is that a lot of those people are going north, okay, and going to downtown. And so, in a sense, when they're talking about branding and doing stuff like that, I mean, I would start with the realtors, okay?
We've talked about that.
Right, that you need to talk about this as a specific kind of community, okay? And, you know, a lot of ranch houses, you know, one floor for older people, those kinds of things. I think that because there's a lot of transition around there, and so it may be worth, okay, saying, you know, we have our own police force, okay? Different from the regular police force, but you have to find out, you know, how important it is it and how much are you willing to pay for it, okay?
Right, and what did we, I don't know, because of all these questions that I have a lot worn on here, thinking about all of what we've talked about. However, if we, can we include a question, if we're going to add as a possibility using blended police force, for instance? Maybe we need to ask, how important is it to you that we have?
Right.
Or did that factor into you moving to Minerva Park? 100% honest here, that was the deciding factor for us.
Okay.
We wouldn't have had a private police force, no way. Love the community, think it's absolutely gorgeous, would not have lived here without a police force.
Okay. And I think that's what we.
If we ever get rid of it.
Okay.
We live really close to Cleveland Avenue.
Excuse the question, so that.
We live really close to Cleveland Avenue. And I can't tell you the number of times that my neighbors and I have seen people in yards that we know don't, you know, don't live here.
Right.
And.
I get it.
I live on the ravine, so, hey, people can walk right up into my backyard and my living room.
We gotta walk through our backyard daily right now.
You do, don't you?
It's getting worse.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So.
Maybe lights along the ravine would be a good.
No, it would not, it would not.
That howl of sadness would happen all over.
That only for mom when people are out there.
That neighbor across the way has gone, is out of control now. They, they haven't, they, it's like they have, I can, I can see an ant running around in their backyard. Their lights are super bright.
Walking down there and I was astounded.
It's just.
I was astounded by the lighting.
Oh, no, a lighting ordinance, you know? Do you guys have a noise order?
Let me write this down. Who would handle that?
You've got to have those lights that, you know, we're already killing bugs, birds, and everybody's getting, all, all the animals are getting desorinated because of all this light in.
Yeah.
It throws everything off.
So, they have like super spots? You should take a picture for me, so I can see.
It's just.
Or just drive them down.
You don't need a flash camera, really, I mean.
Yeah, seriously.
Can't miss it.
Or go down Woodley.
That's interesting.
It can't be, I hope it's not covered.
Okay.
Anyway.
We digress, we digress.
All right.
Okay, so removing this, these questions, those are suggestions and then.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll redraft the police questions, add a couple, move things around, send a new draft. Then, of course, the last section you just hit deals with the optional demographics we put at the end. People can answer or not answer. And that, we will wrap it up.
Yeah.
And then, once you guys get the draft, I appreciate you guys' comments.
Okay, now, you need the sex and the age of the person who is answering this. And do the age and clusters of 10 years. And please, please don't do male, female, or other.
No.
Changing times.
If you're that confused, we don't want you answering our questions.
No, we just don't want to know.
That's very old. It's silly.
There's a reason for, she said, you didn't come in to view, so this is my full disclosure. She has some 40 years' experience and 50-plus now. And there's a reason they asked.
I'm working at Ohio State University and our surveys are self-critically correct. I look at them and all I can think of is people like me getting one of those questions and think, I'm out of here. Sorry.
The times there are changing.
The times they are changing.
All right. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Get some other suggestions and I'll take care of it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. And when you get it done, I'll, I'll give you another, I'll give you another draft. He now owes me two lunches, you know, I mean, I'm.
I'd be glad to join you sometime.
Okay.
I think it'll be fun. Okay.
All right.
The descender is, yeah, okay, I just wanted to suggest. Yes, for unique hits for IP address? Yes, just discounting non, non-unique, right? So, not, not unique IP address, but if you get two exactly the same from one IP address, that's either a missed submission or, you know, somebody saying, oh, just give my same opinion more than once and it will cap double.
Thank you, Brian, that makes sense.
Then it's unique, you got it, right? And then put some limit on, right? So, if they've got 10 from one address, it's unlikely and that requires a test. Yes, man, I'm glad. Appreciate you, sir.
Okay, that's good.
Thanks, yeah.
That's great.
Okay, so.
Sorry.
Very nice.
You guys have been a fun group. You laughed at all my jokes. Good job. Well done. If he gets it, if he actually gets out to lunch, then we'll. And if you do find a ranch with a large tool shop, I'm interested.
Does a tool shop have to be like in the garage?
You know, website.
No, it has to be.
Put it on the CAF or you will let them know, so they can put it on the Facebook page. So, a small enough community, we can get, I'm sure we get a good response, right?
Plywood, one of those big boards.
A big survey, 20% makes people.
He's got a lot of tools, okay? But you can disassemble the tools and take them down. But those large plywood boards, you've got to have a hang.
Who actually is going to be the person to review the results?
Two houses.
Who will get those results?
All the public records are always welcome, you all get a report, you know, the results. That's not an issue.
So, we can see.
You couldn't make the ankles.
You can be able to review anything you want to detail once you can pile it, so you have to post process.
That's quite the job to do that.
Who's compiling the votes?
So, you're okay with the ballots?
Right.
Certainly, my houses are.